Thank you, Jason. Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Today, we have two items in the agenda. We will start with the 200 Mill Avenue update, and I want to welcome our Economic Development Director, Cliff Long. Welcome, Cliff.
Thank you, President Perez, members of council. It's my pleasure tonight to bring an update to the council on the 200 Mill project. As you know, we've been working diligently with Cosmos Development out of Bellevue to acquire and redevelop the former City Hall parcel right next to the library on the river. It's been a lot of negotiation. A lot of things have changed in our economy since the last time we had an update. So we thought it would be good to brief the council and answer any questions on our progress to date. And so it gives me a great pleasure to introduce Oscar Delmore of Cosmos Development.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Cliff, for the introduction. Thank you, council members, council president, and mayor for allowing us to attend this meeting and giving you some time to update you on our progress. Last time we spoke to the council, I think it was September, October of 2019. A lot has changed since then, for sure. The COVID pandemic is still with us, and the economic impacts and implications are just now starting to be felt throughout our industry. So I'd like to start the project update with a conclusion. And that conclusion is that we remain very interested in completing this project. For us, 200 Mill is what we call a keystone project. Literally and figuratively, a keystone project is one that can trigger and support positive changes in the community. It has a lot farther-reaching impacts than the immediate project itself. We are uniquely experienced to complete such a project, especially in these times. We've always been physically conservative. We're operationally lean. We have a long view on life. And we adapt and prefer to navigate through challenging times. They offer the greatest opportunity. Our presentation tonight is two parts in which we wish to update the council. The first part is a three-dimensional massing video that we want to fly to council around the site. It shows you how big the project is, where it's set back, what it could look like from different angles. It doesn't have fenestration on it. They're massing models with some color that represents what you're going to be looking at. And then the second part is a traditional plans and elevations depicting some of the ideas and issues we've been working with staff on for the last several months. I'd like to try to make this an interactive presentation. So if you have any questions, just blurt them out. We'll answer them. We'll stop. And we'll go back a little bit if you need to. I would rather not save the questions to the end. But if you wish to interrupt and ask for some clarification, be happy to do that. I also want to thank Julia for helping me navigate uploading. And hopefully, I got it right. I'm an old dog, and sometimes I don't get things right the first time or the second time. So a little bit of patience as we go through this. So I think I need to share the screen now and would like to start with the video sketch-up presentation. And I'm going to start from the beginning. And we are starting the presentation here at the corner of-- can everybody see the screen first? I want to make sure that everybody sees that.
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. So we're starting at the corner of Mill and Hauser. Hauser is on the right, and Mill is on the left, right at the intersection, probably standing in the middle of the intersection. What you see in front of you is building behind the trees that are currently there. You see Building B and Building A in the background. So I'm going to start the flyby. We're coming up Mill Street on the opposite side of the street. And I'm going to pause here for a second. We're looking through the street, the what is the a temporary interim open space, Building A, Building B. And we're going to keep rotating, going north on Mill, starting to look backwards at the site, down the open space, the interim open space. We are now inside the parking lot. And we are inside where the library parking is currently. We're at the entrance of the library, coming across the bridge, over the Cedar River, looking at the project back. What you see in dotted lines here is the existing building that is currently there in volumetrics in the same perspective that is being removed. The base of the building is three-stories podium. It has two floors of underground garage, three floors above. Turquoise is retail. Red is lobby. Two floors of parking above grade. Eight stories of residential building, steel frame construction for Building A. We're coming around, moving to the east, stepping back across the river a little bit. And you begin to see Building B on the left, the podium that connects the two buildings. Coming across the bridgeway, that is a pedestrian connection. And this view, and I'll freeze it right here, is the library, the park on the other side of the river, the new riverfront plaza, Building A, Building B, the podium. And this yellow plane is the setback plane by code from the Cedar River. You'll see some projections in here that we're working currently with council on how to resolve even with the removal of the existing building. So we're going to step back a little bit further and come around so you can see that plane on how the code plane buildings have to be within that volume, that envelope. So we're going to come up and look down, pause for a minute, Building A, Building B, a raised platform podium, open space between the two buildings, the riverfront plaza, the removed existing office building, the King County Library, and the parking lot that we're leaving as part of the space that we're for parking for the King County Library. So we're not including that in our project. The next piece is now Building C imposed on the site. Coming down to the same angle, street level. Coming around, we'll stop for a second here. We're saving a cluster of trees right at the corner because they provide an entrance from the south, from the War Memorial and the museum. And they provide a drop-off at that corner. Lobby, lobby for the two buildings. Retail amenity space is this orange. Smaller units are shown-- studio units are shown in purple, and then regular one- and two-story units above that. Come around the Hauser-- I mean, come around Mill, come back up to the front of the project, the drop-off. We're inside the parking area of the King County Library. And we're going to stop right here. And we'll look down a retail street that we're developing between-- pedestrian retail street that we're developing between Buildings A and B and Buildings C. Filled out with retail, underground level. Pan back across the Cedar River, approaching it and looking at it from the park. And you can see the different massings of the buildings. Building A is the lowest. Building B is slightly higher. And Building C is the tallest. Again, they're separated buildings so that they don't become one big building on the site and have view out. The plane, the code plane, setback along the Cedar River. Back around. King County Library parking lot. Corner of trees saved with the drive-through, drop-off in the buildings from an aerial perspective. And back down to Phase 1 and 2 completion, back to where we started from. Any questions on that?
May I jump in, Madam Chair? Yeah. So I had the honor of-- along with Armando representing the council when we selected really Oscar's firm to do this. And I mean, I want to say I think you've been true to the sort of the concept that you brought forward back then. I can see you've made some-- talking to Oscar, I can see you've made some updates and changes. But I think that we knew it was conceptual at the time. And certainly, one of the-- I remember one of the most important elements that we had discussed at the time was your willingness to remove the existing building. And I even remember discussions about, you know, how much credit could we obtain, not only against our codes, but against the state shorelines by taking out that building? We knew we kind of wanted to have an active shoreline there and thought we'd score lots of points by removing that building. So my thoughts on this is that I'm glad you're still interested. It seems consistent with what we talked about. And going one step further, I'd personally like us to be able to help resolve the issues where the plane intersects the building, maybe taking some credit for the fact that you're taking out a building which is practically sitting in the river right now. So, you know, that's my thoughts on it. And I like seeing that we're still at it.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else have some questions at this point? Council member Benedetti?
Thank you so much. I'm really pleased to see the amount of retail that is going to be facing the street and really going to perhaps provide some real nice amenities for that neighborhood or that part of the neighborhood, that part of downtown. What I'm wondering, in terms of what's planned there, I know that one of the things that really sort of held us back in Second Main and some of the other newer buildings with that retail space is not having the ability for those retailers to have grease traps and proper ventilation to be able to have restaurants. And I'm wondering what's planned as far as the ability for that retail to be potentially restaurant-capable?
Thank you, Council member Benedetti. We lost Oscar for a minute, but he is back. So I don't know if he was able to-- Oscar, welcome back. I think we lost you for a minute. Were you able to hear the question of Council member Benedetti? You're muted. We cannot hear you. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
I just heard the first couple of words that Councilman Corman started, and then I dropped out. Everybody went silent. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Council member Benedetti, did you mind asking your question again?
Oh, not at all. So I was speaking to the fact that it's very exciting that there's that retail space. And I know that one of the things that was really holding back some of the potential for restaurant development in some of the other projects that we have going on in the city where we have that ground floor retail is that they're not restaurant-capable, right? They don't have the proper ventilation, the grease traps, and the ability-- they're just, they're not designed for it. And so the question that I have is whether or not some of those retail spaces will be able to be used by restaurants because it could be a real amenity for that part of downtown.
You're absolutely correct. And given the scale of the project, the width and depth of these retail spaces lend themselves to what I call medium-sized, to smaller restaurants. We are typically planning for at least five, maybe six, restaurant-capable spaces. Because of the size, we can put in the venting early on. And so we won't have the difficulties that smaller projects have in doing. I think the base needs to have restaurants because one of the greatest pastimes is eating and watching other people. So I'm hoping with the pandemic, when it leaves us or we get it under control, we will have the space to also go out to the pedestrian street along the Mill Avenue or Mill Street and also along the riverfront to expand outside dining. So those are all key factors that we're building into the project.
So, Oscar, if you are comfortable, we can continue with the presentation. And then we will ask more questions after you finish your presentation.
Okay, so I'm going to start on the second part of this, which is the traditional, what I call traditional floor plans, some elevations, and some look at what the project could be and feel like that we asked our consultants to present. So it says host disabled participant screen sharing on my screen. Can-- let's see. There we go. There we go. Let's see that. I am trying to find my files. Hang on a second. Basic. And-- can everyone see that or-- no. Well, I'm going to ask Julia to help me, if she's available, to find my file.
Julia, Julia, can you assist Oscar?
Yes. I am in my screen sharing. And I am trying to find my file for that. And I don't see it here. It's files. I press it off-drive, share, can hear your sound. We went through this earlier. And now I'm looking with-- not being very clever about this.
Cliff, do you happen to have his presentation on your desktop at all?
I do. I can share that right now if you'd like.
Okay, I'll give you the rights.
Thank you.
That would be great. Thank you for saving the day, Julia. Okay. Cliff, if-- can I walk through and ask you to change pages as we go through it?
Yes, please.
Okay, so this is our cover sheet. If we go to the second page. This page is an area context page. And it really describes why we feel this project is a keystone project. If you look at its location, not only is the park on the other side of the river, its proximity to the river, the King County Library, which is an amenity. It also shows its portal into downtown Brenton, the Second and Main improvements that were just finished, and its proximity and visibility from the freeway, which is a key component of its volumetric expression. It becomes what I call a fountainhead, a start point where people live and can go into downtown, which is off to the left, or can go north to the open space and park system, or can meander along the Cedar River. We'll go to the next slide. This shows the two floors of underground parking garage. The green is Phase 1 of the project, which supports Building A and B. The yellow is-- it shows us Phase 2, but it's really Phase 3 that supports the Building C and the high-rise portion of that. All told, the project develops 618 units. It has about 30,000 square feet of retail space. And it has about 640 cars. There are more cars provided than is needed in the first phase of the project, Buildings A and B, just because of the site area that we need, but also to bring in more parking early on. As then people get accustomed to different modes of travel, then it can be shifted as we bring in more residential units later. The phase of the-- what we're purchasing and building is the line on the north between the King County Library, and then it goes to the right-hand side where the park system or the open space that we're developing. We'll go to the next slide, please. Second floor above. Each of these floors create about 187 cars per floor. We're tucking the ramps for the parking garage, both above and below grade, along Hauser. It's the most-- it's the noisiest street. It's the least pedestrian-friendly of the street. It also allows us internally to make the parking area between the two phases most efficient. Next slide, please, Cliff. This is the ground floor. The ground floor-- we are on Building A and B, the first phase of the project. We are internalizing all the loading docks. So nothing is shown to the street, the long Hauser. It is all internalized for maintenance and back-of-house functions. The parking garage ramps circulate in a circular fashion, up and down, on the right-hand side. The retail spaces are all along the pedestrian outdoor corridor, along Mill Avenue, and along the entrance of the park-- to the project and the new riverfront plaza. Next slide, please. This is the upper two floors of the parking garage. On the right-hand side is Phase 1 and 2. And on the left-hand side is the parking for Building C, the yellow. The slot in the middle is the open space between the buildings. Next slide, please. Massing of how the project fits on the site. Building A, the lowest along the riverfront to reduce its scale. Building B, along Hauser. And Building C is the tallest, along Mill Street. And also because what we wanted to do is create a large enough podium with Building A and B so that we could build and isolate as much parking as possible for the Building C at the end. And in the interim, we would leave the Building C area as an interim open space along Mill Street. Next slide, please. Statistics of how the project lays out. There are basically 640 parking spaces. That's the lower chart. There are 150 small studios on the project. They were initially intended to be hotels. We don't know how that's going to fare it out at this point. And then we have basically 468 regular one-bedrooms and one- and two-bedroom units, predominant of one-bedroom units. Next slide, please. Basic floor plan layouts, testing the volume and width and sizes of these units on each of the buildings. Next slide, please. Typical unit layout. We have two-bedroom units on the right, one-bedroom typical unit in the middle, and then two smaller units on the left-hand side. These are the studio/hotel units. But they're not the traditional hotel where it's just-- there is a galley kitchen. There is a typical bathroom, full-size, but you come into the galley kitchen. And then you also have what's called an open-bedroom concept where the bedroom could actually be walled off with sliding doors. And it allows a long-term studio unit to close that area off and still have a sitting area along the wall, along the outside wall and balcony, so that it would have more of a conventional, smaller-scale open space with not having to look at the bedroom all at the time. And these units would be 15 or 16 feet wide. We're testing that breakout now and see how many units actually fit on the floor plan that we've developed for each of the buildings. Next slide, please. One of the things that was asked of us was to develop some imagery for Phase-- the interim open space after Phase 1 and the park is built. What could that space look like? The area of it is shown in the highlighted yellow. The major trees that are along the parking lot there would be saved. We wouldn't be excavating during that first-- that phase of the project. We would save all those trees and try to create more of a soft landscape feature, which is not all hardscape, but somewhere between lawn and-- so areas of lawn, some areas of paving. Some images that we've shown on the right-hand side are of similar-type projects that we asked the architects to research for what could happen. Next slide, please. The other aspect that the staff asked us to look at, the project sits on a three-story podium. The ground floor being retail on the pedestrian side along the waterfront. But on Hauser, it would be more parking and circulation. And what would it look like? And our response to that-- the base doesn't need to be foreboding. The images on the right side are all parking garages. So these are skins that can be applied to the parking garage to break down its scale, provide the fenestration that's needed for a cityscape so that it doesn't look like and feel like a parking lot. Next slide, please. The next piece that we were asked to look at was what we call the pedestrian alley, sometimes referred to as a muse. But it's-- we see that as an open space that is open during the normal business hours. It could have a green roof on it. It could have some canopy roofings to shield it from potential rain events. It could have lighting designs on it. But the intent is to provide an open space during the time that the retail is open and be able to have spill-out pedestrians, both for circulation and dining. And in the evening times, at the late evening, it could be closed off at either end so that it could provide some security to that area. And these are images of spaces that have similar types of designs. Next slide, please. We asked the architects-- the architects and the environmentalists. We separated them for a second. And we said, "Think big. Don't hold yourself back at this point. Tell us what you envision and how you envision this new riverfront plaza to look like and feel like." They came up independently. They both came up with hardscape and softscape areas on the project. And the architects-- and both of them feel like there should be some places where people could go down to the riverfront in a structured environment and put their feet in the water and yet have plaza areas and/or native areas that function as a biological and habitat value. So the images here were the ones set aside by the-- selected by the architects that showed similar projects throughout the U.S. that have achieved that. Next slide, please. The environmentalists, we asked them, "Think a little bit also outside of the box." And the watershed company came up with an idea of scooping out part of the river and bringing it closer to the buildings and allowing for the fast-moving river on one side, the channel, the main river channel, which is to the bottom of the screen, but an area scooped out that increases the floodplain, provides more natural-- out that increases the floodplain, provides more natural settings for gravel and rocks and spawning for fish habitat. And yet it allows for areas where people can go and cross those shallow areas and be, be more interactive with the waterfront. Next slide, please. This is the image that they saw and found, and you can see them, the, on the left-hand side, they're more urban scape with retaining walls and landscaping, which is grass, which is a good infiltration. There are also areas where the rivers, where they've seen rivers, where they run a little faster, but other areas where they're shallower and people can actually walk across them. And the boundaries of these zones can be developed in high habitat value, native plants, boulders, spawning grounds, so that fish and wildlife can habitat cooperatively and working with the people to enjoy the waterfront at different times of the year. Next slide, please. This is a, we've taken the aerial imagery of the site, of the area, and we now we've superimposed the buildings in a, in a more graphic nature. So you can see on phase one and two, buildings A and B and the podium between them, that at the top of that podium level would be open space for the residential. To the riverfront, you see the green space, which is the open natural area that we would be developing, a boulevard walkway against the building, more urbane in nature. The drop-off between the King County Library and the project on, is that the teardrop shape? The, the King County Library parking lot and the grouping of trees is left alone. Those are, we believe, significant trees that are, that have a visual impact to, and set the stage for the King County Library, and they should be, they should be preserved. We are, we are working with opening the entrances and closing one of the entrances to make that parking lot work more efficiently. And on the south, you'll see at the intersection of Hauser and Mill, you'll see the museum, the war memorial down at the bottom, and that group of trees that we're trying to save at that corner again to create a backdrop for an entrance into this special zone, which will be along Mill, and will lead you eventually, regardless of which path you decide to take, will lead you eventually into the heart of the project. And the next slide, please. Full project at build-out. People circulate, pedestrians circulate around building C and A and B, and all paths lead to the river. All paths lead to the, to the shoreline, and each connection point interfacing with the city is celebrated as a, as a special, as a special zone. And we're, we're trying to do that with landscaping and, and pavements and formal entrance points to the project. That's our presentation. Love to entertain some questions.
Thank you. Do, do, do any council members have a question? I actually had a comment regarding the, the trees, the mature trees that are already in the area. So we are gonna preserve those, right?
Yes, the ones that we've shown, yes. And there would be on the north end, the King County Library parking lot is a, is a real kind of a special entrance point there, and we, we need to protect those. And the parking lot underneath this thing, the same, with the exception of a, on the north end, we're putting in a entrance and exit as opposed to an exit only. The south corner, at the intersection of Hauser and Mill, is a key entrance corner to Mill and to the downtown, and so we want to save those as well. The trees in that interim zone before phase three is built, we would save them and leave them alone where the building C would eventually be, but afterwards they would be replaced, and that would be a, the footprint and garage for building C. But we would replace trees along the whole street front.
Okay. And my second question is about the parking lot. I appreciate the fact that you guys are considering to bring more parking, because one of the problems that we have right now with the second and main is that some of the residents are on waiting lists because there's not enough parking. Because as you mentioned, until we don't have a public transportation that they, they know how to use or is more effective, you know, they, people are driving their cars. So I appreciate the fact of consideration to add more parking slots for this facility.
Right. And that's why I think in the interim with phase one and two, we're looking at providing more parking than we truly need in order to help facilitate that time between final build-out and when people will hopefully leave their cars at home more often than they do right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Kerman.
Yes, thank you. I have a question, just some feedback I wanted to provide. I really, really appreciated the concept on kind of, as you said, bringing the river closer and that kind of design concept where it would provide both ability to access the river, but also some habitat for, for salmon that are in the Cedar River. I, I know this is, and you showed some examples in photos I've seen elsewhere. I sit on the Rite Aid Semi-Recovery Council, where they've shown that that really be an economic engine as well as habitat restoration. So I was really pleased to see that. I guess the one question that did generate for me, just since you were talking about the setback requirement earlier, would I be correct in assuming that this wouldn't impair that further, or you wouldn't be proposing it? Or would this provide some, I mean, if anything, it'd seem like it'd be providing some credit towards it because of the ecological restoration that would accompany it?
The answer is we would be leaving the site in far greater benefit than it currently is because of the removal of the existing building, which is totally within that setback boundary, which is not allowed. So if anything, we're opening up the area and improving it.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Yeah, Madam President.
Councilmember Kerman.
Yeah, yeah, Oscar. When, when we toured some of your other projects, I think, I think some of them included rooftop patios. I was wondering if this one, if you've gotten to the details where you know whether this one would include any of those?
Don't know yet. It'd have to wa, because the project's gonna be a little taller, and so on the third and fourth floor is great. Could have a rooftop on the 10th or 11th floors, but above that, I'm not sure if that's, would be a feasible thing or not. But yes, we, we haven't looked at totally on, on how to, where to allocate that yet.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Benedict.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Given the proximity to the freeway, is there extra, extra precaution around noise mitigation for those units that are going to be on Hauser?
Yes, they'd have to, we'd have to, there is argon treatment inside the glass that can, triple painting that can help in the sound absorption and reduction of the, of the noise transmission, yes.
Okay. And looking at that parking, is there a, is there a specific parking plan that will be happening with the city around parking enforcement, who's going to be doing what, which signage, what's going to go where? Is that something that's in the future?
Yes, we have the King County Library to work with. We also have the retail spaces to work with and the residences. And I, and I think what we're trying to develop is a, is a maintenance or property management program that works for even visitors. So all of those things have to be worked out, and it's part of our purchase and sale agreement with the property to implement and begin developing those maintenance and management scenarios.
Okay. And then with your forgiveness, just one final question, which is, I'm wondering, you know, you'd mentioned at the start of this presentation that we really are at a very different moment than we were at the start of this project. Has that shifted the timeline any?
Yes, yes, not a lot. Right now, we're, we've been working with the city at the request of the King County Library to be provided a lot so that they wouldn't be part of the urban waterfront plaza development, so that they could have their own parking area. And we've been, we've been working with that as that becomes finalized, and we're doing, I think the city is working to do a lotline adjustment before the project starts. So that's pushed our project back a little bit. Economic conditions have probably pushed the project back about a year from what we originally thought.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Hara.
Yes, thank you. I'm curious if there's any, in the design of these buildings, if there's any attention being paid to lead design, leadership in, in energy and environmental design standards for smart buildings, HVAC, greenscaping, non-pervious, impervious surfaces, that sort of thing.
Yes, to all of those. It's a, it's a little early to start that, but yes, we need to incorporate all of those into the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see more questions, so I really, Oscar, want to appreciate all the work that you guys have done, and we do have some concerns, as you can see, especially because we don't want the neighborhood to be impacted by, you know, more traffic and cars parking everywhere. But I know that you guys are addressing those concerns as well as the invite, environmental impact because of the closeness of the Cedar River, but I know that you guys have been very proactive to protect that area as well. So with that, and if you guys don't have anything to add, can I move to the next topic?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to thank the council again for giving us this opportunity. It's been a pleasure. Thank you. And I will be leaving the meeting at this point. Thank you. Bye now.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Cliff. Thank you, Oscar. And with that, I'm gonna introduce our, geez, Jan, I never can remember your title, so please. But our next topic, which is capital budget presentation, and Jan Hocke is with us.
Thank you. I'm going to try to share my screen. I don't think I was successful in that. Let me go back again. Okay. It's there, Dan. It's shared. It is shared. You can't see that? Okay. I can't see it on my end, but that's okay. Thank you, Council President Perez, members of the council. Tonight, we have the first several budget discussions planned for the course of the upcoming months. Did it switch to the next slide? Okay, there you go. Okay. Tonight, we start with an overview of the budget calendar, and then we'll provide some revenue projections and an update as to how it relates to our cost containment efforts related to COVID-19. And the next, we will have the capital improvement presentation for parks, facilities, and transportation. In terms of the calendar, as I noted, we will provide a budget update and an overview of our CIPs. And then the, just so you know, the budget is currently in the preliminary stages of development. Under, let me, I'm not quite sharing that right. Let me, oh, there we go. That's better. Okay. Under state law, the mayor presents the proposed budget to the council. Mayor Pavoni is scheduled to present his preliminary budget on October 5th. And then the departments will be giving their departmental budgets all throughout the October meetings, and those are really the meetings during which council has the opportunity to deliberate on the proposed budget. And then the budget-related legislation will be brought forward for council consideration in November. As with any budget cycle, there are multiple opportunities for public outreach. We had the first public hearing on June 1st of this year, and our second public hearing will be held on October 5th, once the budget is delivered to the council. And there'll be a third and final public hearing on November 2nd, and this is in advance of the council, considering the budget ordinances and setting the property tax levy for the 2021 levy. There's opportunities every council meeting, you're, all are very open to public input at those meetings. And then we have also set up an email in finance, finance@rentenwa.gov, where the public or any other stakeholders can provide us input. Before presenting the CIP information on the budget cycle, I just wanted to take the opportunity to provide a brief update on our revenue and cost containment efforts related to COVID-19. You'll recall that back in May, we projected a loss for 2020 of $21.3 million. That's exclusive of REIT, but REIT is really just a receipt of revenue and then transferred to other funds where there are eligible expenses. At that time, we had no actual receipts upon which to base our estimates. Now that we have a couple of months of actual revenue data, we have updated those numbers, and the picture has improved a bit, but that, the revenue losses, you will see, is still quite significant at $16.9 million. There's several reasons for the changes. Some things have, are coming in better than anticipated, some a little worse. Property tax has held up remarkably well. We're on target to make budget for that, so that's good news. The BNO tax has been hit harder than we expected, both due to COVID and the grounding of the 737 Maxes. So we are estimating currently just under $5 million as opposed to the 4.2.4 we're estimating back in, in May for our loss. Sales tax has held up better than anticipated with an estimated loss of approximately $5 million as opposed to $9, so that's good news. But other revenues have been hit even harder than we ever expected, and those are things like permits and recreation fees, and it's all simply due to the prolonged closures. Hence, we're gonna continue our cost containment efforts, making sure that we, whoops, I went ahead one slide too fast there. We're gonna continue our cost containment efforts, it's mounting to $5.2 million, as you can see there, and the use of those reserves. The cost containment efforts are those things like hiring freezes and eliminating discretionary spending, deferring or eliminating some of capital projects or equipment replacement, and again, use of reserves. As we head into 2021, we're proposing a baseline budget for 21, 2021, because we can't really fully predict exactly how well next year's recovery will be. We are anticipating that revenues will grow, but it will be off of a lower base because of the revenue loss this year. And in addition, I just want to remind you that when we, at your council retreat earlier this year, I gave you a six-year forecast, and we do continue to have a structural problem that we need to address at some point. And just to quickly remind you why, revenues typically grow at a slower percentage rate than, than expenditure growth. For example, property tax limitations are pretty significant in Washington, and that's versus our increased costs due to things like medical, medical insurance, pension, and other types of cost. And speaking of property taxes, we're limited in Washington to the lesser of inflation or 1%. And with inflation falling over these last several months, what we are seeing is there is a good possibility that we may actually get less than 1% growth for property tax in 2021. Also, you'll recall that we've lost $3 million annually because of this annexation sales tax revenue we were getting. We got the last of those payments in mid, mid 2018, when we hit the 10-year point for the state sharing the sales tax for the Benson Hill annexation. And another reality, like all other Washington cities or cities across the country, is that our infrastructure is aging and continues to be a challenge. Renton has historically contributed some of its operating revenues to fund necessary capital improvements, but that, that definitely puts pressure then on the general operating budget. So most likely later this year and early next year, we're gonna continue our discussions about whether or not we need to continue cost containment and in 2021 and beyond. There's, but at this point, it's just a little too early to, and we have too little data to really, to know exactly what that will look like. So we will be continuing to analyze that situation very carefully. And just also the fact that we view some of these reserves, they are one-time sources of revenue. So once you use them, they're not available. So we will continue those discussions. I'm gonna stop briefly there before going on to turning it over for the CIP discussion in case anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Jan. Councilmember Benedict.
Thank you so much, Jan. That 16, I know that when we originally were looking at these numbers, that 21.3 represented, I believe, about numbers, that 21.3 represented, I believe, about 20% of our regular budget. What the 16.9 then, does that bring it to what, 17, 18%?
It's right around 14%.
That's, that's better.
It's an improvement.
It's an improvement, 14%. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ojala.
Yes, thank you. Jan, I just wanted to touch back on your comments about using the reserves. This annexation, internal service, and CIP reserves, does that tap those out completely?
It does tap out the annexation sales tax reserve. What we had anticipated when we adopted the 19 and 20 budget is that we would use that over like a six-year period and just to smooth in to the transition of losing that sales tax revenue, that credit from the state. But what we're doing now is pulling it forward because this is the year when we really need it. So that one is tapped out. The other ones are not tapped out. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Jan. Any more questions right now? I see none, Jan, so you can continue.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over. Kelly Beamer is going to give you a presentation on parks and facilities, CIPs, and Martin Pastusia will give a transportation CIP. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly.
Great. Thank you, Jan. Thank you, Council President Perez and council members. Good to see everybody. I'm going to run through these, not too quickly, but please stop me if you have any questions throughout this project. So as you can see, for parks, we have 19 prioritized projects through the 2022, 2122 cycle. We're requesting 1.265 in 2021 and 1.26 in 2022. These include multiple sources with mitigation funds, King County levy monies and grants, as well as some impact fees, too. All of the projects are based on safety, ADA upgrades, reducing maintenance costs, and obviously, the bond projects. Next slide. Thank you. So council has been briefed fairly recently, about six weeks ago, I believe, on the bomb project. So I'll keep this at a high level. But Kiwanis Park is a 55-year-old park. And as you can see here, this is a conceptual of what the renovations will look like, the major renovations and replacements. The replacements include an ADA looped walking path, along with accessibility, ADA accessibility off of Union, which is on the right-hand side. And we'll look at another picture of that in just a minute. We have a new synthetic turf infield for the baseball field. That will be the first in our system. We're going to be redoing the two sports courts, as well as removing the activity building, replacing the play equipment, putting in a parent plaza and shelter, and then going, putting in a Portland Lou as well. This project is estimated at $5.6 million. Next slide. And here really quickly is the, on the left is the current accessibility off of Union, and on the lower right is what the conceptual looks like for the ADA access into Kiwanis Park. Next slide. The next park that is part of the bomb project is Philip Arnold. This is a 50-year-old park. This also will include all accessible entries into the park, as well as a looped ADA pathway. We'll have a new parent plaza, a new playground, basketball court renovation, as you can see on the lower left, and the removal of the activity building, another Portland Lou in there, and a shelter as well. And this project is estimated at $5.5 million, again as a bomb project. Next slide. And as council is probably aware from the presentation that Leslie gave on the bomb project overviews, the Coulon North Water Walk replacement had to be moved into a two-phase project. This first phase, well, as you can see in the lower left, is what our current pilings look like. There's major erosion. These pilings are 39 years old. So the first phase will be to encase these piles, which will extend the life for about 30 years. And then also, we'll be completing Phase 2 design. So we'll be ready to go once we get this first phase complete. Council is probably aware as well, this will take significant permits to get done. We're looking at approximately eight permits before we can get in the water. So we're estimating construction in November, December of 2022. And then Phase 2, as you can see on the right, will be completing the rest of the water walk, adding the light penetrating material, and noting that this is a requirement from our Department of Natural Resources Aquatic Lease, that we need to have this completed by 2028. And that project is, the first phase is about $2.1 million. Next slide. Thank you.
Kelly, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute. Councilmember McKeever, do you have a question?
I was going to hold it to the end. It's okay. I would just put my hand on the cue.
Okay, thank you. Let's continue, Kelly.
Thank you. This next project is Coulon Trestle Bridge, which is just north of the North Restroom. As you can see in the upper right, the pilings through our structural surveys are way past their limit, where there's going to be 58 pilings that will be removed. And then what we're doing is putting in a clear span bridge, as you can see down the lower left conceptual. This project, again, a lot of permits that will need to be secured. And we're estimating the completion time of November, December of 2021. We've also applied for a land and water conservation futures grant for a portion of this project as well. This, the clear span will also have the light penetrating material. And as you can well imagine, removing the creosote pilings will be a huge benefit to the environment. So this project is estimated at $1.2 million. Next slide. Our next priority, or categories of priorities, a playground replacement. We are planning to replace two per year through 2026. As you can see, a lot of deterioration from our well-used playgrounds, if you will. It's great to have kids out there, but we want to make sure that they're safe, and that's always our, our first priority. So the city has 20 playgrounds. Playgrounds usually typically last about 15 years before extreme amount of maintenance is needed and or replacement. The oldest one in our system is Liberty Park, and it is 23 years old. The youngest one in our system is Heritage Park, which is 13 years old. And if council remembered, in 2019, we did replace Tiffany, Teasdale, and Cedar River Trail Parks as part of the bomb projects. And this year, through the state grant, we are replacing Coulon Park and then also Liberty Park, which will be through capital funding. For 2021, we'll be replacing Kenny Dale Beach Park and Cascade Park. And actually, Cascade is the photo to your left. You can see some significant drainage will need to occur as well. We're not putting another pool in. And then 2022, we're going to be replacing Glencoe and Maplewood Park, the playground replacements. And then for the budget cycle, we're looking at $625,000 for the two-year, total two-year cycle. The next one is sports courts. That's our next priority, because again, we want to make sure that there's, we're maintaining a safe, playable area. You can see here on the left is the bocce ball court at the senior center, and on the right is Teasdale Sports Court, which is in need of repair with the upheaving and the cracking and whatnot. So these will be, these are slated for 2122 as well, with approximately $215,000 for the total budget of this cycle. Next. Next is our parks and trails, natural areas, the signage. Again, back to lowering or reducing our maintenance. These signs are from the, on the left-hand side is the original signs from the 80s. These signs are difficult to replace, as well as costly. And the sign on the right is one of the conceptuals of what we're looking at for consistency throughout our parks. We will be in 2022, as part of the bomb project, spending approximately $18,000 for some signs, and then we'll be budgeting approximately $40,000 for the next budget cycle and continuing through as we are, as we can, so we can get all of the signs upgraded throughout our system. Also, one thing to note as well, that we will continue all of our structural reviews for our park assets, our bridges, and our bulkheads, things like that. We want to make sure, again, safety is a priority for us and our community. So through the park system, we'll be doing that. Any questions on the parks capital?
Councilmember McKeever.
Yes. So I think you answered my question one, but I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. On Philip Arnold Park, you mentioned the ADA improvements. I just wanted to make, confirm that does cover both sides of the gate, right? If you came from Benson, Cascade, you would have the same ADA improvements for access as if you came from downtown, right?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any more questions? Same gone. Kelly, you can continue.
Thank you. So next, we'll cover our capital facilities costs. We have actually seven projects, and they're not six, but that's, that's okay, for 2021 and 22. And then approximately the $1 million requested for each year. This is through REIT monies and carried forward funds from the projects we postponed in 2020. Again, our, the project prioritization, which Jeff presented about five weeks ago on the facilities condition assessment update, these are based on life capacity and, and the safety for our buildings and our people in without, in and around our buildings. Next slide, please. So one of the main projects, as we continue to upgrade, as Jan noted, we have a lot of deferred maintenance, things that, or as our aging buildings continue to age, will need to update some of our components. So this is a major one. We're working with the Energy Savings Performance Contracting and with the Department of Enterprise Services to identify and install energy and utility improvements in these existing facilities. The equip, this, by doing it through this method, this most cost effective, it's the most cost-effective, controls project costs and provides equipment performance as long as, as well as the energy savings to these projects. The facilities condition assessment noted that the fire pump is in poor condition, and our teams continue to address multiple leaks, probably four or five times a year. So this is something that obviously is a huge safety issue for the building. The boilers, which were the original boilers from 1996, need to be replaced. They're, they've already reached their life expectancy. They provide hot water to the building, as well as when we use the HVAC system to heat the building, that helps provide the heating source as well. One of the major ones that we are definitely wanting to address, as council knows, now that we're back up and running, is the information technologies HVAC system. It is currently limited to the cooling of all of the servers that IT has. So what we need to do is add its own separate system, so it's, is not tied into the main system. That way, if we have any type of failure on the main generators, that HVAC in the information technology rooms will be safe and will continue to cool. Also, with the backup generators, those generators are old as well. So replacing those will help support the new HVAC system for information technology server rooms, as well as the need to provide more power in it for our new elevators that will, should be online. All four of them should be online here shortly. This is approximately $2.3 million in our budget cycle. Next slide. Next, we are continuing to do upgrades to our citywide camera system. A continuation of this, as you can see on the left, is brand new. Last month, we installed new cameras in City Hall Lobby. And as council is aware, we have, I believe, 19 cameras on the right in the new Sunset Park Neighborhood Park, which will be open here in the next month or so. This is about $240,000 through the budget cycle. And then again, this, this project was slated for 2020 as one of the ones that we had postponed. This is the Rent Community Center chiller replacement. Definitely has seen better days, and we are continuing to need repairs on that constantly, and especially as we're able to get back in the building and start activities again. So it's scheduled for 2021, and it is approximately $1.2 million for this budget cycle. Any questions?
Some members, do you have any questions? I don't see anybody raising their hand right now. So thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you.
So Martin, I think you're up, right?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
So Martin, do not worry. If you don't finish, we can continue this presentation of the TIP for next week. So we just advanced as much as we can today. And if we don't have enough time to finish it, we can continue the committee of the hall next week.
Thank you very much, Council President Perez. Members of the city council. So before we start into the CIP, I want to give you the basis of the CIP. It's really our draft Transportation Improvement Program. It is a TIP process that calls for an annual update every year. We're currently in the process of doing that. The TIP is the basis of our CIP. The TIP is our plan. The CIP is really the financial authorization to implement those projects approved in the plan. Next slide, please. So our transportation improvement plan, how's our CIP arrived at? It's a lot of community plans and programs that provide input into the transportation improvement plan. The capital improvement plan is the city's financial commitment in the two-year budget. These projects be designed and built with the available funding. So as you can see, the comprehensive plan, community plans, input from our operations and maintenance, walkway and safety reviews, bridge and guardrail reviews, project development planning, all goes into forming the transportation improvement plan. And those where we have the funding available are moved forward into the capital improvement program. Next slide. So here are the CIP, our tip projects for the 2126, six-year CIP, Transportation Improvement Program, sorry. And the ones in yellow are those that are funded or partially funded are what made up our capital improvement program for transportation. As you can see, there's a lot of projects throughout various component portions of the city, with the largest portion being the downtown area, where a lot of this is related back to our grant funding that we received from other agencies. Next slide. So you can see for this two-year cycle, we have a total of 29 projects funded in 2122. Combination of construction, design, and some problematic programmatic allocations for traffic safety, guardrails, and roadway safety, intelligent transportation systems, programming, intersection safety, bridge inspection, repair, sidewalk rehabilitation, replacement. You can see that the number of projects per category are listed there. Next slide, please. So our transportation capital improvement program, the revenues, program expenditure for 21 and 22, our revenues are including business license fees, BNO tax, grants, mitigation, impact fees, and other funding sources. Then due to uncertainty of revenue forecast in 2122, that reflects no fuel tax allocation. What allocation of fuel tax we did receive this year is going to fund our operations and maintenance for streets and roadways. As that is a normal component of funding, the operation maintenance, and then the additional amounts that we have are generally allocated to capital improvements. So because of the limited fuel, limited fuel tax allocation in 2122, we do not have any funding available for our streets and arterial overlay program this year. As council is aware, our pavement maintenance index is continuing to decline. But because of the lack of available funding, we've not been able to fund those programs this year. We've talked with our, with Jan and the folks in finance, and if we see that the actual revenues come in higher than forecasted, we're certainly applying those revenues to our overlay programs to ensure we get some funding in there. But we'll have to wait and see how the economic recovery moves forward, and whether the, the projections are, the actual allocations are greater than the projected revenue that we have for those programs. Next slide. So kind of want to show a little bit about what kind of work is anticipated in 2122. So you can see we're into construction on, either to begin or continuing on the following projects. The Williams and Well Two Way Conversion, which is currently under construction, see from the photograph, upper right-hand corner. We've all, we'll go through each of these other projects as we go through the next slides. Jan? Jan? So the Deval Avenue Northeast roadway improvements include the addition of added sidewalks on the what would be the west side of the project or a south side of the project, and on the north side of the of the frame there, you'll see the pavement restoration and added sidewalks. Next slide. The Lake Washington Loop Trail Three, sorry, Phase Three, you can see there's a portion that runs along Airport Avenue, west of Rainier Avenue intersection and to the Phase Three construction point. So you can see it starts at the bottom there by the Cedar River, and will go across the lower portion, the southern portion of the airport, along Airport Way. And then the last phase, which would be the proposed Lake Washington Phase Four, is on the left-hand side of the airport or western side of the airport. Next slide. Park Avenue North Extension, Logan Avenue North to South Point. This is the extension of Park Avenue North by traffic and circulation improvements to landing area and along Logan Avenue, as well as add a second access point to South Point about South Port Development. Next slide. And then Rainier Avenue Phase Four South, Phase Three A, South Third Street to South Tobin Street. As you can see, this will continue the enhancements to the major thoroughfare in the city, provide for enhanced pedestrian experience while facilitating movement of cars and buses. Next slide. So those are the construction projects that will be beginning in 2122. What design work is anticipated for 2122? As you can see, we've got another projects that are moving forward. Southwest 43rd Street resurfacing, which you may recall was one that we brought to earliest year to swap out some money from PSRC in order to facilitate Rainier Avenue Phase Four, the South Seventh Street Corridor Improvement Projects, Northeast Sunset Corridor Improvement Projects, South Second Street Conversion Projects, Renton Connector, Hauser Way Bridge, William Avenue Bridge, and the Rear Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase 4B. Next slide. So the Seventh Street Corridor Improvement Projects, Oaksdale Avenue Southwest to Burnett Avenue South, design and key business in Lincoln, the intersection improvements on important east-west route connecting transit, regional trails in Renton City Center. You can see crossing and intersection improvements. You can see the signal and bicycle facility improvements, and then the addition of a multi-use path along the area adjacent to Grady Way along Seventh or Grady Way and Talbot area. Next slide. The South Second Street Conversion Project, this is to again from Rainier Avenue South to Main Avenue South, is you see two phases of work, Second Street west of Logan and on South Second Street east of Burnett, and facilitate the movement, facilitate pedestrian and vehicular, as well as bus lanes, move them to the heart of the downtown. Next. The Renton Connector is another project we'll start some design work on. This is Burnett Avenue South, South Second Street to South Fifth Street. This is really a pedestrian and bicycle corridor through the downtown area and provide those connections into the into the downtown core of the city from the south end and to the north end, as well as links the Lakes to the South Trail. It's really providing a connector point for some of our pedestrian and bicycle pathways into the downtown area. Next. So again, I have Vanji Garcia, our Transportation Planning Manager, and Bob Hanson, our Transportation Design Manager, who are also here with us to answer any questions that council may have. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Martin. Any questions from council? I see none. So I really want to appreciate the three of you and this great update. In general, I really want to appreciate all the all the administrators and the hard work that you have done, especially in these tough times. Budgets is still was very important to have the participation, as well as our constituents, and and Jan especially. I really want to thank you for thinking in different ways that this year our constituents can give us an input. And it's not just the all the opportunities that they're going to have for the public hearings and and also during the public comments, but just the idea of having a specific email where they can address and contact and question and suggestions during the budget time or previous to budget, I think is great. Thank you very much again. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
You.
You.